Good evening, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order tonight as a regular scheduled meeting of Clark County Board of Commissioners for August 1st, 2024, 5:00 PM. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance and your faith in the prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we just thank you, give all and praise to you. We thank you for the glory of just being under your guidance and under your watchful eye. We thank you for the joy we have in Jesus and for your love. Give us the courage to stand in faith, to do your will, to always seek ye first in the kingdom of God. Help us to remember each day that we are working for a prize greater than anything that we could receive here on earth. So, Lord, we just look for there to be peace and joy and happiness when we're in your presence. So, the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Thanks, Jeff. Hey, just a real quick announcement, I know everybody can tell we've got inclement weather outside. If, we've got plenty of medical professionals here, emergency professionals here, if we have to evacuate, we're gonna use that door and this door. We've been told that if we have to evacuate, we're going to the bathrooms on the first floor, male and female, respectively, stairwell, and then we'll go through this hallway here and do like we did in 4th grade, put our head between our knees, cover our heads, protect ourselves from any flying debris, okay? No glass in that area, so if we do have to evacuate, use those two doors, we're gonna go left, bathrooms, stairwell, and then the other hallway, okay? Thank you all. Next up on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes for July 18th, 2024.
I make the motion to approve the minutes from July 18th, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion and second on the floor to approve the minutes from July 18th, 2024. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next up is approval of claims and payroll.
Claims and payroll, all in order.
I make the motion to approve claims and payroll as presented by the Clark County Auditor.
I'll second.
Motion is second on the floor to approve claims and payroll as presented by the Clark County Auditor. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next up is approval of the agenda. Any amendments to the agenda?
I would like to make an amendment to move item number I to the top of the agenda, make that number, make that A to the first item on the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
This is motion and second on the floor to amend the agenda and move letter I to the beginning of our new business and make that the new A. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor amending the agenda say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Next up is public comment, we have a public comment sign-in sheet. I'll only ask that, looking through here, if you're here for the rezoning issue, if you don't mind, I would, we will open up a public hearing when the rezoning issue happens. We will allow 20 minutes for both sides to make their comments for and against. So, I would prefer to move those public comments to the public hearing time. And then, the other issue, if there's something on here, we'll go ahead and handle that in public comments. So, looking through here, I guess, John Croucher for River Ridge and Growth in County?
Right here.
Okay, go ahead. Floor is yours, please tell us your name and address, and your three minutes will start as soon as you tell us your name and address.
I didn't know you were gonna pull me up, so please. I'm gonna pass this out of the like River Ridge.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, sir.
My name is John Croucher, Lewis 7115 Bethany Road, Charles Town, Indiana. I wanted to make comment on laws with the rezoning and whatever has been just Clark County in general. But I don't know how many of these people know that the demand for housing and land required for 60% of the labor workforce here in Clark County are gonna be 6,000 acres of property. It's gonna take a lot of property just to meet the 70,000 people that are coming to Clark County to work every day. This will increase the burden on our schools, lay-in bill, emergency service, road improvements, sewer, water, gas, and electrical services, this is all coming. There's no comprehensive plan between county government and River Ridge. There's no coordination. You guys don't go to River Ridge meeting, River Ridge isn't here. There's no coordination in the growth that's happening outside of this property. You guys are five years behind, there's no catching up. I've met with the River Ridge Board, they say there's no plan, I've met with some of your people in government, said there's no plan whatsoever. River Ridge is a tip district, they're retaining all of their property taxes within this property. Last year, they generated over $61 million in revenue and over $13 million in property taxes, but none of that is being filtered back out into the town. The county to rebuild Stacy Road, Bethany Road, which has just been done, High Jackson Road, or some of the other roads that feed into River Ridge, it's all going to happen. These guys want, wanna argue about building housing, and all those houses out there that they wanna build are gonna filter back across Stony Point then. Charles Town Memphis Road to filter into here, if it's just some of those people, that's just an added burden. Those roads are treacherous, there's just nothing to do. But the schools are going to be affected if this county grows, more people come into this county. And there's no plan for the future growth of that, there's no coordination with River Ridge against our county government. And you guys need to come up with some kind of comprehensive plan and start attending their meetings and see what the growth is and how many people are coming here daily or weekly or monthly, if this place continues to grow at an extremely rapid rate. The traffic is horrid, that's just one issue, but these people don't want housing, but River Ridge wants employees. And you guys are not coordinating amongst yourselves with that, so I wish that you guys would please think about that and come up with some kind of comprehensive plan and do that. But the money's there, the piece of paper I just gave you said that River Ridge can give you money. It says that right there, line four, it says money could come from River Ridge, but you guys aren't asking for it, River Ridge is not offering it. Triva Hodges is on the board and she's not even asking for money for River Ridge. It just kinda baffles me that, why are you not asking for money to do this infrastructure improvement that's needed to feed the traffic and the people in and out of here? That's still a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Croucher. Is going on here, is going on here on a Ben Hess potential conflict of interest? Mr. Hess, if you don't mind, state your name and address for the record, and your three minutes will start after you state your name.
Ben Hess, 1374A Deerfield Loop. So, the question I've got is, Commissioner Kaufman, there's rumors going around that you own a company that will benefit greatly from this rezoning, and I was wondering if you could clear that up for us.
They own a company that what?
That you have a company that will benefit greatly from the rezoning.
If you're talking about real estate, I have retired from real estate about two years ago in order to be a full-time commissioner and be here as much as possible, so I would receive no benefit at all.
Fantastic, I appreciate.
Yeah, I retired from real estate and, yeah.
Thank you. The other thing that I had to bring up was, we were thinking that with the rezoning of the building, that the people bringing in the new should also increase the infrastructure to be able to support what they're bringing in. That's all I had.
Thank you. Ms. Curry, you don't have anything for your topic, is it rezoning or is it something else?
It's public comment, not for the agenda item, mostly.
Okay.
I mean, it's kind of, but, no, it's separate.
Kelly Curry, 4897 Newmarket Road, Jeffersonville. Thank you, guys, it kinda is, but I just wanna get out of the way anyway. But thank you all for fast-tracking the two recommendations, I'm so excited to have a full board so that we can make some really good decisions proceeding forward with Jeff Fire and Jeff City, et cetera, hopefully in the future. I want the citizens of you to get to know that we've worked hard and we've got safety plans in place, we've got the automatic aid agreement, Jeff Fire is there for us. And moving forward, it can only be positive, I appreciate y'all accepting the board members quickly, and we're gonna get them appointed today, maybe bop ahead, but appreciate it. Raise y'all's hands, it's our two new, soon-to-be Fire District Boards, and we are so happy to have you, fellas. Thanks for stepping up, thank y'all, that's it.
Thank you.
Get out of y'all's way.
Ms. Blessed, you've got Utica Fire and Memphis Rezone.
Yes.
Okay.
Peyton Blessed, 320 Mary Streets, Jeffersonville, Indiana. My Utica Fire Board, I know there's a bigger name for the Board, but Utica Fire Board, I just really wanted to come up here and commend Kelly Curry, I know she's a friend of mine, but really, she stepped into a mess. There was one board member that wasn't even in place, so they were operating with two members. When she stepped into it a few months ago, those members, remaining board members, could not even be contacted for a period of time, financials were who knows where. So, I hope that moving forward, we can have a little bit better oversight of these functioning boards, that they do have all the members that they need to operate, that they are running with some oversight, that, you know, the president is truly the president, that you all have elected or appointed and not people that we have contracts with such as New Chapel. So, I really wanna commend Kelly Curry for stepping in there and taking all these actions, she's the one who got this ball moving and ball rolling, and I think we're in a much better place, I feel very confident with her leadership, and I'm very excited about the new board members as well, thank you.
Sandy Basham, looks like you've got something, public notices? Hi, Sandy.
Hi. Sandy Basham, 15219 New Market Road, Memphis, Indiana. I just came back a few months ago, I brought up the fact the public notices are getting still put into the newspaper, and maybe a suggestion that we could put those on the county website somewhere, because a lot of people don't get the newspaper anymore. So, I know we had, I brought it up several months ago, I was just wanting to see if maybe there was any, maybe I missed it, I don't know, some discussion on that or...
Is there any public notice in particular you're talking about, because we cannot, we, so public, like, planning and zoning is gonna be responsible for their own public notices, so...
Right, right. So, like, any, any public notice that we have as a county, so like rezonings or, you know, bids, I guess, however you, whatever you put in the newspaper, like, for, you know, I mean, I come in here because of solar, you know, when I did it, was because there was, unless you read the newspaper or you saw the sign, you knew nothing about it. So, if, I mean, I wouldn't think it would take too much to add it to the website, you know, to the county website, just a tab to say public notices, and that way we would all know, you know, what was, what was going on, so...
So, just some food for thought, Scott was the mayor, we have to abide law as of right now, it's in the paper.
Yes, yes.
It will take some coordination amongst the other boards to make sure all the public notices are put on there, but point well taken, obviously, we should be doing that, so we can work on that.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you. I'm looking down the list, I think the rest of them are for the rezoning issue, so we'll take those up whenever we open up the public hearing and allow those to speak then. Moving on with our new business, the first up we have are appointments to the Utica Township Fire Protection District Board. I'll go ahead and introduce these gentlemen. The first up is Joe Jarls, he's a resident of Jeffersonville, Utica, has some very good credentials, Fern Creek firefighter, how many years did you serve, Joe?
20 years.
20 years as a Fern Creek firefighter, has served on the Training Bureau Chief of the Fern Creek Fire Department and President of the Fern Creek Fire Department Board of Directors, so we appreciate your willingness to step up and support this Board, we definitely need your experience on the Board. Next is Mr. Leverett, Randy Leverett, lives in Utica, Jeffersonville also, 19 years with the Jeffersonville Fire Department, former Fire Marshal from 1992 to 1996, arson investigator and served on the Planning and Zoning Board for the city of Jeff. So, not only bringing fire department experience, but also experience on boards and things like that, so we look forward to your all's direction, help on that Board, and we appreciate you guys stepping up. So, that being said, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to appoint these two gentlemen to the Utica Township Fire District Board.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joe Jarls and Randy Leverett to the Utica Township Fire.
I'll second.
So, there's a motion and second on the floor to appoint Joe Jarls and Randy Leverett to the Utica Township Fire District Board effective immediately. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Congratulations and thank you both, appreciate it. Okay, next up on the agenda is the ordinance of staff, I'm sorry, no, 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 is a rezoning ordinance for Planning Commission Resolution 08-2024. Eric, are you gonna be presenting this tonight, or are we gonna have the applicant? I'm sorry? Okay. So, what we'll end up doing is, we will go ahead and open up a public hearing, we will have the applicant go first, he will be allowed 20 minutes to present his plan or, yeah, his plan, and then after that, we'll allow 20 minutes of feedback from those that have signed up for public comment and more, if available, to discuss the reasons why we should not move forward with this rezoning. So, who's gonna be speaking for the development tonight?
Corbett.
I'm sorry?
Jeff Corbett.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Corbett, the floor is yours.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Corbett, with Mayor Holden, one of the commissioners, a favorite person to drive, is a land owner. You know, I'm here after a favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board, doing R2 zoning, excuse me, I brought a letter from, not a letter, but email, a little secret check.
Thank you.
Can you speak to our state's agenda again?
Yes. So, anyway, I'm here after a favorable recommendation for a rezoning. You know, I know this is very controversial, obviously, there's a lot, lot of people here. You know, and I'm just here to tell everybody, tell you all that this, what we are planning doing is a single-family residential community, and I believe you all have a document prepared by Ron Kohler, attorney stating that, that would be going to record, go recorded, that it will strictly be single-family, no apartments, no duplexes, just single family. You know, I've lived in this community my whole life, I was born in Albany, live in Charles Town now, so you know, I'm very familiar with area, you know, 65 years old, I've seen a lot of change. You know, I remember when you, there was distance between New Albany and Jeffersonville, there was distance between Clarksville and Jeffersonville, there was distance between Sellersburg and New Albany and Clarksville. You know, our community's changing, it's growing, you know, we got River Ridge out there, which has been brought up, a lot of jobs coming in, people need places to live. You know, we build good communities, Owenworth Commons, I don't know if you're all familiar with that, you know, that's the kind of product we build. You know, there's a lot of controversy over using up the farmland. Well, you know, if we went in there and subdivided land up into five acres, how much more land would you have to have to fulfill the need of the home? So, you know, in a lot of ways, we're conserving farmland by building, you know, quarter acre lots, you know, third acre lot, and so forth. So, you know, I just want this Board to understand, we're here to benefit the community, to bring services to this community, to, you know, fulfill the need of, you know, people having homes. You know, I submitted an email there to you from the school superintendent, how, you know, the school will benefit from students that we will bring to them, and that they have more than the capabilities, and all of y'all know that, you know, when we do developments, you know, we put all the infrastructure in and all that, so, so forth. So, I just asked this Board for a passing of the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want, may I have one of those?
Here's, you can use that, I have, I have, I have, I have, I've read it, so you can put that in. We got one for the record.
Go ahead.
All right. So, I think we can do this in an orderly fashion to allow for those that came here to speak against the zoning, we'll go ahead, this is a public hearing, just to, just to recognize that. We'll go ahead and allow for 20 minutes of public comment, we'll stop when people switch positions, but I'll go ahead and call people up according to this list, and if time allows, we'll allow others to speak after that, so, excuse me. First up is Mike Rankin. Mr. Rankin, just state your name and address for the record, and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. My name is Mike Rankin.
Just a second, stop it real quick, just, just for, okay, just, just for, just for the record, the 20 minutes will run concurrently, so if you're, if you speak for two minutes, that leaves us 18 minutes, if you speak for 18 minutes, that leaves us two, so I just wanna, just wanna clarify...
I hope I don't talk twenty minutes.
Yeah, so, just, just to be fair, okay, I'm sorry, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. My name is Mike Rankin, I live at 822 Kings Court in Memphis. I'm a 16-year resident of Memphis, Indiana, and I'm here today to ask you to reject the request to rezon the property we're discussing here, the 183 acres of farmland in Memphis. The amount of increased traffic that would result from this project would be extremely unsafe, given the state of the narrow, poorly maintained county roads that surround it, not to mention how it would overwhelm our school, new students, and make Memphis Blue Lake Road even more of a traffic disaster in the mornings and the afternoon than it already is. A disaster created because someone thought it would be okay to build a third truck stop in Memphis, which I'm pretty sure this body probably had something to say in at some point in time. So, please don't permit another disaster in Memphis. And please don't forget, you guys work for us, we're the taxpayers, you work for us, not the builders and developers. We're asking you to stand with us. We want to actively uphold you when you are up for reelection if you do not support us in this. Based on the facts I have presented here today, I respectfully request that this zoning change be rejected in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rankin. Next up is Mark Lainhart. And again, if you don't mind, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Mark Lainhart, I live at 1307 Harvest Ridge Boulevard in Memphis. I bought my home three years ago. I would not have bought my home there three years ago if I'd known this was even proposed. I bought my home where I did, because of the farmland, because it was a small, sleepy little town with one, two, three neighborhoods. That's grown, just since I've been there in three years, it's already expanded. I respect what this gentleman said about not building apartments, that's that one piece. What I saw from your all's future plan, which is a whole yellow swath, all the way from Henryville, all the way through Memphis, all the way to Borden, is for low and medium-density residential homes. What about these apartments that I am here in about? Residential apartments are not single-family homes, they're not double-family homes. And what that gentleman that was preceding me just said about the hazard of these single little bitty roads, I'm almost run off the road every time I drive that road, as it is. That's with the little bit of traffic that there is. I've heard specifically that there's nothing in writing about any infrastructure, and that's fine, that you're gonna bring in the infrastructure for that neighborhood of 183 acres, and I've never heard anything so asinine, I'm sorry, as saying that by using 183 acres of farmland, you're saving the rest of it, that's just silly. But, you know, I'm 60 years old, I've never heard of such nonsense, and I wouldn't, my father worked in that ammunition plant when it was still active, okay, so I've got a little skin in the game too. And I spent a considerable amount of money to buy my home and my property where I did, because I didn't want this. But let me tell you where I come from. I came from living at a residence for 30 years, that was at the very end of construction, surrounded by beautiful orange groves and strawberry fields that no longer exist. That infrastructure was added really nicely too, and those buildings are all beautiful too, and it probably increased property values too, but I moved from there because I didn't want it, and I would not have bought here had I known this was anywhere near planned. And I'll end with that, other than, the gentleman that preceded me also said, he's a voter, I bet you everyone in this room is a voter, I will vote against anyone that exists. Go back.
Next up is Mr. Bobby Wendell.
I'm Bobby Wendell, address 1913 Ebenezer Church Road. First and foremost, I'd like to thank our elected county commissioners and the ones who have been asked to be on the Planning and Zoning Board, where members have voiced their thoughts and continue to show support by being involved, especially over the last two years with the unknowns, to many that have sent a shock through our community, so thank you. My property joins the proposed development. I didn't go to the first meeting, as I've reviewed the congressional plan and have accepted the future growth in our region. After all, I believe Clark County is second, I think in the state for growth at the moment, that we can say is progress. My concerns where my eyebrows began to raise was regarding the last meeting when Mr. Guernsey, a builder and someone I respect, on the zoning board mentioned that he didn't think the area was suited for apartments, and went with the comprehensive plan or the intent for compatibility of surrounding areas. Then the builder Murphy says he didn't know apartments were allowed in R2. And I, these are some of the facts, 'cause I feel like that was misled of not 100% transparent. On June 7th, before the meeting, the July, the builders submitted the application for 550 homes. At the Plan and Zoning Meeting, Murphy stated multiple times, 150 to 750 homes. And then Murphy states at the last meeting, he didn't know apartments were allowed in R2, which he has a development in Sellersburg that is R2 with apartments that may be considered townhomes, but front yards barely 20 feet, and folks, we're talking about shotgun homes with five-foot side yards. R2 can be up to 50% increase in the number of lots and allows for two-family dwellings and apartments and even wireless communication facilities with even group homes. Murphy's been a car dealer, I know this guy personally a little bit, he's an owner of a real estate brokerage and a proud builder of 50-plus homes at the moment, I believe. To state the unknowns regarding what is permitted in R2, when you have your name everywhere across, comes off to me as dishonest and maybe a shot at those who are unfamiliar with the processes. There's always the argument, one can do whatever on their property, but we're talking almost zero clearance lots with allowances that never been approved, to my knowledge, on the country roads where we're talking about adding up to 1,500 cars at a minimum, a day, twice a day driving on, not including the daycares, the sewers, the waters, increase in taxes, and I know you elected county commissioners are proud citizens of this community, I truly do believe that. Before tonight's final decision, even if you had already made your mind up, I ask that you go against the grain until further enlightenment on the matter. Ms. Connie Sellers, Mr. Jack Kaufman, and Mr. Brian Glover, with eyebrows raised, are you ready to open Pandora's Box with the unknowns, even with the letter of commitment from a builder, that at the end of the day, is only as good as the paper it's written on? If the builders decide to sell, or some outside firm makes a crazy offer, they will have the right to use this land for R2? I ask that this Board do what is right considering all things discussed and not allow a letter of commitment, and zone this development, keep it agriculture. There's developments, many developments that go in agriculture, there's complete subdivisions in agricultural, people don't know this, but that is the reality. What is wrong with keeping it that way, building on an agricultural development, maybe giving a variance for a little bit smaller-sized lots, but we don't have to change it. But to think long and hard about the Pandora's Box and precedents this set for the future growth... growth in Memphis, and further out in the county, 5G tires, group homes, and apartments belong by highways and main areas with zero clearance slot sizes. Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Kara Kennedy.
Hello, my name is Kara Kennedy, my phone number, I'm sorry, my address is 11370 East Blue River Road in Pekin, and I'm representing Norman and Dwayne Powell at 14034 Columbus Man Road in Memphis, Indiana. Good evening, as I said, I come before you tonight to ask that you hear the concerns that are in this room, take them into consideration, and keep an open mind, say no to this rezoning of the 183 acres going from Agland to R2. In my folder here, I have 28 pages worth of signatures that were created, to give you a total number, that is 1,345 signatures right here on this paper, from people who realized that something is not right here, something is wrong with the thought of turning this Agland into the R2 zone to provide this development of neighborhoods. The intent of the R2 zone is to provide the development of the neighborhoods while ensuring compatibility with existing patterns of a development. That is listed in the comprehensive plan. An R2 zone in a rural area off of Chrome Road and Columbus Man with 500-plus houses does not belong, if you take that statement into consideration. Additionally, I have a letter here with, let's see, 24 signatures from adjoining property owners. These are strictly people who are within 200 feet of the property, who have signed saying, hey, we don't want this proposal for all of these houses to go in this 183 acres, along with all of the problematic things that will come along with it. I don't know if you've been to Memphis, I don't know if you have visited this land, I'm certain that you've seen pictures of it, which does not do the property justice. It is a very large piece of land, pictures make it look much smaller than it is, but it is three miles from an access point and 1,003 feet from the Borden-Indiana line. The comprehensive plan states that any future development that occurs in the county should accommodate either preservation or agricultural land or appropriate development of agricultural land. It also states that any new development encroaching or infringing on rural or agricultural property should not negatively impact agricultural property or the ability to grow and harvest food. I literally copy and pasted that straight from the comprehensive plan. With this 183 acres in question, most if not all of it has been farmed for 80 years, and I think that there are likely several people in this room that can attest to that, and so when you take that into consideration of what the comprehensive plan says, I see a contradicting case. The comprehensive plan also states that the vision statement of Clark County is, Clark County is a vibrant community full of diverse amenities and opportunities for all people, balancing growth, agricultural, and natural areas of the county. When it was created, surveys were taken, and one of the things that people wanted to preserve in Clark County was farmland. One of the things that they wanted to change was keeping green areas. Those people, whenever that comprehensive plan was created, spoke about what they wanted for that plan. The plan was formed, and saving farmland, especially land that provides food, contradicts that plan if this land is given permission to be rezoned to R2. The comprehensive plan also has a section on location criteria that is supposed to assist the county commissioners in making these zoning decisions. In that section, it reads, and this again is copy and paste, it is to encourage the continuation of agricultural lands and the right to farm in the unincorporated areas of the county. It was said in the first meeting, I'm going to go ahead and say it again because I know that you guys were not in front of us as we spoke, but Memphis does have a population of less than 1,000 people, so when you have a proposed subdivision of this size, it will not only just double the population, likely, it could triple, quadruple the population. According to the census, there are approximately 500 homes, and this subdivision alone is going to double the amount of homes in the area. Not to mention, between Fairview Farms, I know you're not familiar with the area, but these are all within a very tight radius, three to five miles. There's Fairview Farms, there's Champion's Run, not to be confused with Champion's Point, Kingsland Fields, it has an addition that's actively in progress, and there's also an addition over by Silver Plains Trace, and with all of those combined, there are over 225 homes in the Memphis area that are already planted, that have already gone through this rezoning process and are already literally on the ground building. That's not counting the several areas who have already received the zoning change, have already passed this step, and they're in the process of creating the plat for them to be able to build these subdivisions. So that 225 will turn into whatever number that this is going to turn out once these people finally turn in their plats, but they've already skipped this step because they've already been able to do it. There are two examples given last of, in the original planning meeting on July 10th, one was a subdivision with approximately 150 homes, because that was the starting number that was given, as far as how many homes we're going to go in this subdivision, and I just want to say that the one that was given as an example is 150 homes, is literally .38 miles from Highway 31, so direct access control to a major collector road. The other example, Champion's Point, that was said to be R2ed is not Champion, or I'm sorry, and I do want to say also, the 150-home subdivision is not R2. They said that it was R2 to give an example, it is not, it is zoned agriculture. So, the other example was Champion's Point, it's PUD-zoned, they had said that it was R2-zoned and gave it as the example of the 750 homes example. Again, it was that range between 150 to 750, which we later found out was 550 to start and plus. So, the PUD-zone Champion's Point, I don't, I'm sure you may have experienced there or been there, but it has the direct access to the arterial road. So you're talking about two subdivisions that you cannot compare to this potential subdivision, given the fact that there are a lot more factors when it comes to jumping on a road and heading straight to the interstate or to your destination. Also, the example in the staff report that was originally given to myself before I realized that we had access to a petition application for the public record, it gives a, an example about another close R2 zone, it's 1.35 miles away, that states in the staff report, I will say that's the way the pro flies, it's not driving 1.35 miles, and it is only, right now, that was their example, as far as, oh, well, there's R2 in the works already, well, it only has 23 homes on the plat currently, so you're not talking about an R2 zone that is really 550 homes, you're talking about an R2 zone that has much less intentions. The NDOT Roadplay Functional Size Viewer that the government's website recommends to use classifies Chrome Road as a local road. The comp plan lists that local streets and residential developments should generally carry fewer than 1,000 vehicles per day, and it should be designed to discourage or prevent the movement of through traffic and to limit the speed of the traffic. Chrome Road is a 20-foot wide road with a speed limit of 30 miles per hour. Comprehensive plan shows that Chrome Road, or on the transport, I'm sorry, transportation map on the comprehensive plan, it has Chrome Road classified as a collector road. According to the comp plan, a collector road, a rural collector road, I say, is to start medium traffic volumes at speeds of 30 to 50,000 miles an hour. As you can see, there's a difference between the two. NDOT says that they update their website weekly, they've updated this map that is recommended by IN.gov weekly, and so, obviously, there's a disruption there. Was it an error whenever the plan was made? I don't know. Is the comprehensive plan, and in this area in particular off this road, back to be this R2 zone? Perhaps, maybe it was written with the intentions of that road being a collector road, but it's in fact not. So was that an error, was that a mistake? Did you say, hey, let's turn this into an R2 road because we have this road here, but in reality, NDOT says, no, it is not a collector road, it is a rural local road? So I ask that you reconsider, what this comprehensive plan states even. Many people have asked if there's traffic studies being done, no, I was given that answer by NDOT itself, saying, hey, we do not give traffic studies until there's a plan that works. Well, is there a plan that works? No, there's not. For Chrome Road, for Memphis Boulevard, for the Memphis exit, I was discussing earlier, and so, given that the R2 zone commits a smaller minimum lot size, that 5,000-square-foot residential, when you have, and it's supposed to be in compatibility with the existing patterns of the development, there's less than a handful of homes within a three-mile radius that sit on less than an acre, and a home sitting on a little over a tenth of a mile, or I'm sorry, a tenth of an acre, does not fit into the existing pattern in that area, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense if you were to compare the numbers, it just doesn't make sense. So, with that being said, history's going to be made tonight, this sets the precedent, this sets the tone for what's going to happen in the future, what people are going to come in and say that they want, all of the developers in the area, the local states, all across the nation, Clark County's the second in Indiana, and you're going to say, hey, you can go ahead and do this, here it is, and it sets the tone. History's going to be made tonight, whether you say yes or whether you say no, but I ask that you please consider turning down this rezoning into R2.
So we got one more minute left of our public hearing, I have five people on my list. Is there anybody on this list that wants to say something different than that, that has not been said as of yet? Okay, go ahead, please. What was your name?
Stephanie Wilson.
Okay, go ahead, Stephanie, you're actually next on the list, please, just give us your name and address.
So Stephanie Wilson, I live at 2121 Ebenezer Church Road, also own a property on Weaver Road and Crow Road. And I'm a relator, so normally I'm on the other side, but this does not make sense. I will tell you, on my, if you, I'm curious if you all have driven down Ebenezer, Columbus Man, and Chrome Road, and you have seen the crumbling infrastructure. My house on Ebenezer Church Road, US County has come and put rock everywhere to try to quit the road from crumbling into my dam where I live. So, this is personal, and you're going to decrease my property value, it does not make sense, you're going to decrease my traffic, I, I own a small business, and it just does not make sense. I think, if you see the passion here, and it's, I mean, I'm also a developer, I was part of Fairview that had developed, but this does not make sense, this can be homes, and us not knowing what this was until now, until, this is not fair to us who live in the community, and I'm beyond upset, and I'm also a voter, so.
So I have four more names on this list, I have a Bruce Lowe, I have a Sebby Fryre, a John, and a, I don't know, Bronowski, Mr. and Mrs. Bronowski, I have four people left on my list. Is there anybody that wants to speak, to say something that hasn't been said as of yet? Okay, if you don't mind, sir, please step forward, I'm going to allow the two more. Sure, like I said, just please tell us your name and address.
My name is, my name is John Hutter.
I'm sorry, I couldn't read your name, John, I apologize.
That's no problem.
Is it H-U-T-T-E-R?
One T, H-U-T-T-E-R. My address is 2004 Poindexter Lane, Sellersburg, Indiana. I didn't prepare anything to be said, I didn't hear about this till this morning, I've got a little bit of knowledge about, I think these people need to know that the builder that wants to do this job, I've had problems with him, I've been in front of Mr. Kaufman three or four times to discuss it, I haven't really got a satisfaction response from the county. He put a subdivision downstream for me, upstream for me, for a creek, and he was allowed to get by with all kinds of, he should have been, had some restriction put on, he didn't have a retention plan before he started this construction, sign everything, what he was going to do, had no self-fencing up, I brought it to the county commissioners, I've got photographs, I've got documentation where he was allowed to get by with a lot of things, and these people need to realize that this builder, he is getting a lot of leeway, and I just hate to see this happen out there in the rural areas, because once he gets these homes built, he walks away. And like this young individual said earlier, and I made the same statement to the county commissioner forward, you all work for the, for the citizens, you don't work for these builders, I understand you have to have, I understand you have that role, but it needs to be under a controlled situation. And the concept you all can talk about is what I have had to deal with, what I'm still dealing with, the destruction and erosion on my property during the construction, it's like the creek has been four years ago, I've still got a muddy creek, I've got all kinds of side walls on my creek, it's been washed out, I've got trees I'm going to have to bring down, and this gentleman here, he's been allowed to just affect everyone else in the county, you know, and these people need to know what they've got ahead of them, and so that's all I have to say.
Yes, sir. Bruce Lowe, 1108 Woodland Drakes. Yes, sir.
And I just want to bring up that, I live out there, and I've thoroughly loved it through the last 17 years, and I have a son who's quite pleased, and we get to walk the roads and everything else because the traffic is down, I ride my bicycle all the time through these roads. It's, it's a nice rural area where we all see each other, we all know each other, it's a friendly atmosphere. You put shotgun houses that are used to being city-oriented people, and you put them out there, the traffic, I mean, the roads, I'm sorry, but they're terrible, they're windy, narrow roads, they're rural roads, we put up with it because we're in a rural area, but there's no way that you can put those many houses on little 50-foot lots, and they, that's just crazy. My house is 68 feet long, how in the world are you going to get 50-foot lines? I mean, it just makes no sense to me. So, I'm not against progress by any means, I love the subdivision we live in, but it's got to be planned, grown throughout. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. So, we're going to allow for the developer to respond to any comments, if you'd like to respond, sir. The floor is yours, if you'd like to respond. Yes, sir.
Go ahead. I'm landowner, but he gets down, I'll accept you then.
Okay.
Most of the lots in this neighborhood will be 60-plus, and, you know, I've been a developer in this, you know, 25 years or more, you know, we abide by all the restriction, all the erosion control, you know, they're, all our neighborhoods are approved by the dreamers board, by planning and zoning, all that stuff, you know, we deal directly with the county engineer quite often on things, and, you know, I think, you know, people who know me and know the houses we build, the subdivisions we build, you know, understands that we are one of the most conscientious developers in this area. We take care of our neighborhoods, we do a lot of amenities in our neighborhood, most of our neighborhoods have clubhouses, swimming pools, you know, they're places nice for the community, and like I said, I'd assume, we respectfully ask for your approval. Thank you.
I have a question. So if it was left ag, because as someone said, I don't know, I'm sorry, there's been quite a few people speak tonight, you can build homes in ag, how many homes would you be able to get if it was left as ag?
I can't really answer that question. The reason I can't answer that I can't really answer that question. The reason I can't answer that question is because it's been changed. You know, it used, you know, we used to have 9,600 square foot lots in agriculture, okay? Now, you know, typically, I think in agriculture, now you gotta come and do a zoning change, okay? Because I do not believe you can do 9,600 in agriculture anymore. And that's why we go through it. It used to be, you know, if you had agriculture land, as long as you was doing 9,600 square foot lots, you didn't have to do a zoning change. And I believe the county has changed that ordinance.
Eric, have we changed that?
If you're on sewer, you're allowed 9,600 square feet.
Yeah, absolutely. So then you don't have to come in for?
The frontage, in agriculture, you're required 100 feet of frontage, 80 feet of frontage, I apologize.
Right.
And then for R2, you allow 50 feet.
And the reason they're asking for R2 is because a lot of times, we get rid of these and stuff, you have, even though the lot's big, it may only be 50 at the beginning. Most of our houses are, you know, I'm not saying most of them. Typically, all our houses are 48 feet wide, so we always do like 62. But, you know, when you, you know, we don't, I'm not a checkerboard developer. I'm not gonna go out there and put lots like this. You know, we don't make curved streets in, make it pleasing, plant a lot of trees and everything else. So when you do that, okay, even though our lots are bigger, sometimes the frontage isn't, because you know, this one, corner is like, like this, and then so forth. You know, and Ellingsworth is a perfect example. Ellingsworth is in middle of town and you do your thing, but, you know, water's in the line. There's a perfect example. Right there, there's not straight streets. You know, if you go to Nile Hill, look in there, you know, there's not straight streets, okay? And the other thing is when you, you know, when you do these smaller lots, and that's what people want today. They don't want two acre lots. I mean, there's some that do, but they don't want, they don't want, you know, a lot of people are passionate wanting to cut grass and everything else. And then, you know, also when you do that, you get more green space. We always put a lot of green spaces in our neighborhood. So it's kind of compromising, a little bit smaller lot, but then you get green space and everything else. And like I said, I hope all of y'all think of some of our neighborhoods, you know, they're top notch.
So Eric, say that again for me, so if it stays ag, you can have, what was that again? It was 80, 100 foot?
80 foot of road frontage, and 9,600 square foot lot. And that's if you have sewers.
Okay, and these will be on sewers?
Correct.
And then if it's, if that's on ag, if it goes R2, you could put on 50-foot lots, what was it, 50-foot of road frontage?
Five, yeah, 50-foot road frontage, 5,000 square foot on.
You have a question? Well, I'm just curious, why, why do you want to go to R2 instead of doing it with the ag? And I know you just said, and I agree, and what you said is true from, from what I've been reading, people do want smaller lots. They're all over where I see the smaller lots. But I did drive out and look, and drove on along this man, I drove down Ebenezer, I drove through Kings, is it Kingsfield, Kingsland, whatever, Kingsfield. And I looked, and there's a lot of nice homes out in that area. Some of them tend to be bigger than the ones that are wanting to be built. So is it, is it a financial issue? And guys, please, no one laughed at you, or, please be kind and just let him speak, okay?
You know, if you go in our neighborhood, you know, this is a big development, okay? You can't build, if you, if you build the same thing, and what I, what I mean by the same thing, if you're gonna build all, you know, 1,800 square foot houses, we'll be there 25 years, okay? So, you know, it's, it's nice to have flexibility to go into a neighborhood and say, okay, this section is gonna be, you know, starter homes, more affordable homes. This section's gonna be an estate section. You know, you can mix it up, and you give that flexibility. You know, Ellingsworth was over 500 lots. So we, you know, we did cottage houses in there, we did estate section. I mean, I got houses in Ellingsworth that are 600,000. I got, in the same neighborhood, I got houses that, well, you know, they went up, but at the beginning, they were, you know, 190, okay?
So is that a pub? That's a pub, correct?
That is a, well, yes. You know, Jeffersonville. Yeah. But, but you know, of course, I don't think the cottage homes is what, for this area, but we still need to be able to go in there and do, you know, starter homes, you know, nice homes, but starter homes. And then we also need to be able to go in estates, you know. And backing up to Ellingsworth, what was really nice in Ellingsworth is we built one house that's by a bender, and across the street, she built a house for her mom, a elderly lady on a cottage lot. You know, it's the nice things you get to do like that. And like I said, if you, if you, if you crack, you know, and I don't wanna say crack the box, but you know, if you go into a development like this, and it's all the same lots, it'll be there for 25 years. And that's not good for, that's not good for the development, it's not good for the community, because, you know, we want to get it, you know, build the houses, get done, because, you know, it's nice when instructions are required for the residents of the neighborhood. And we do plan, you know, there'll be a lot of green space, common area, you know, that's really a big thing in developments now. That's what people want. So, you know, for all your life, for all your money.
So Eric, real quick question. So if it's, if it stays ag, although the lot footage is 9,600 square feet, that, that, what, does that limit the size of the house on that lot?
No.
So to Mr. Corbett's point, if he wanted to build a cottage style home that was 200,000 compared to another house that was 500,000, you could do that with the ag zoning. It's just gonna affect the lot size and the density within the subdivision?
That's correct. And agriculture allows single lots as well, which R2 would not.
So I guess to that point, I guess my question goes back to why wouldn't we stick with the ag? It still gives you the flexibility. The lots would be bigger, the density wouldn't be there, and it still gives you the flexibility of building a $200,000 home or a $450,000 home?
It's not what the market wants. I mean, like I said, it's not what they're.
But, and I understand that, and I don't mean to be confrontational, but if the market doesn't do that, we're doing it in Ellingsworth, why wouldn't it be, why wouldn't the market, I think the market would support it at a minimum.
Ellingsworth has 40, but why not?
At a minimum, but there's bigger lots.
There is bigger lots. Like I said, we mix it up, and you know, you get people that are downsized, and they don't want big yards. They want the common space and the common area, you know, walking path, stuff like that. And, you know, and that's what you get to doing, when you can flush their houses and leave green space.
I know the model's going towards that more common style, smaller lots, more density, more common areas. I'm just, I'm just kinda here.
That's what everybody wants.
I'm sorry, that's false. I'm sorry. Mr. Dryer, did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
Well, you know, I, yes. My name's Rick Dryer. I live at 13305 Iowa 60, Memphis. I'm a resident, not the city of Memphis, but that's my mailing address. I've lived in the area all my life, born racing Sellersburg, have farmed out in this area. I bought the first piece of land out there 40 years ago. It was a greening farm, and it's the farm that parallels Chrome Road. A lot of discussion about Chrome Road. Well, there's Chrome Road, there's Vial Road, Columbus Man Road, and Ebenezer Road. There's six ways in and out of this property. Most places have one, or maybe two. So the transportation network is exceptional for this property. The problem out there is people running 50 mile an hour down that road, and plus, it's behind on maintenance. The only traffic issue in this whole area is right there to interstate, right in front of an unnamed truck stop. And y'all know which one it is. That can be fixed. That eliminates all the traffic problems in this area. They're conflating that problem there with problems on Chrome Road. I've traveled that thing all my life. I have never, ever got caught in a traffic jam on Chrome, Ebenezer, Vial, or Columbus Man. The only problem is, is people driving excessively fast. That's the only hazard. You drive 30 mile an hour, nothing wrong with those roads, and they need paving. As far as access, I bought this place, and I've never made a secret of it, was to develop this property. Anybody that I've ever talked to in 40 years, I've never misled them in any way, shape, or form what the plan was. The county also apparently agreed with me. They were comprehensive plans for this type of development. The problem is, the sewers are two miles away, two and a half miles away. The gun miscale to get those sewers brought down to this property requires the type of development these guys are talking about. Now, as far as the quality of their work, before I had anything to do with them, I checked them. I drove to their places that they'd built, looked at them, and they're all very nicely done. Now, is there the occasional problem? I'm sure there is. But overall, these guys do good work. I wouldn't have anything to do with them if I thought any different. There's a couple other things I wanted to say that I've forgotten. I got kind of upset over some of the comments that were completely untrue, but that's for you guys to figure that out. I would ask that you change the zoning, because if it was gonna be left at agriculture, I didn't need these guys. I could slice this up into ugly little lots. Remain zone ag, that permits livestock, gun ranges, outbuildings, just everything that is not particularly acceptable to most people. If it stays ag, it can develop that way. I'm not even sure what the restriction would be as far as mobile homes, manufacturer's homes. But I've been offered a couple of times over the years to, hey, why don't you put a couple of mobile homes here and there? And this, getting this zoning change fixes all that. Forever cures that problem. That neighborhood will always be first class, and when, when the infrastructure finally gets broken bad enough, county will fix it. Well, like you say, that's, that's the problem, that in order to get the sewers brought to this place, without the sewers, zone ag, septic tanks, and I would challenge a lot of these people who live out there about their septic tanks. Almost every one of them have problems. They'll say that, but you all know better. Septic tanks in this type of soil are problematic. Get the sewers out there, that fixes that problem. This place has been under slow motion transition from ag to residential for 30 years. The electric company upgraded all their services out there a few years ago. The water company has put in large funds looking for this development. Coming this way, it's exit 16. What does that tell you? 16 miles from downtown Will. Now, how long is that gonna stay a soil, do you feel? It's inevitable, it's gonna happen. And if it's done like these guys are gonna do it, it's gonna be great. If it's done the way, if it stays ag, sewers will never get brought down there. The gun miscale is not adequate to bring the sewers that far. As a landowner, I'm not a developer. When you look at your birthday cake, and that first number there is a seven, it's time to start turning stuff over to the younger generations. And that's what I've done, or that's what I would like to do. And if I develop with myself, like I said, it'll be something altogether different. So tanks, gun ranges, livestock, hey, almost anything goes. A farmer's not gonna buy this ground. This is not gonna stay farm ground. It will change, whether it's these guys, me, or somebody else. It's inevitable, and it's, Memphis is right in the path, progress. And I would say that if anybody wants to protect their little bit of heaven, they should reach into their pockets and start buying more land around them. That's how you deal with that. You don't try to tell somebody else what to do with theirs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eric, just a real quick question. What is, have you, have you ran the numbers of what it does to the density if it stays ag?
That's, that's a hard number to figure, because it all depends on how many roads they have to build, and the amount of land.
I know.
The best I can say is that it's gonna result in a 60% increase of the number that they could have now.
60% deakers?
No, the change is on.
If you change from ag to R2?
To R2, I guess 60% increase.
Right, okay, that's what I was, so the density, I knew the density changed, I just didn't know what it looked like.
Maybe 150 under the current. And assuming they don't run the sewers out there, because I don't know if it would be feasible to run sewers for reduction in the number of lots.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
We want clarification. Okay, I'll make that one. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this. We want clarification on, and you're gonna have to come up with the math, because we obviously couldn't do it here tonight's meeting. We want to know what the difference is in the amount of houses that you would have in agriculture versus the amount of, of density that it would be if it's R2, correct?
Yes, yes, something specific.
So you're gonna have to guess to the best of your ability with the roads and detention, detention basins, because you're gonna have to bring drainage into it. And, and we want to know what those figures would be, or the amount of houses would be.
I will second that motion. And I will make the comment that the reason I ask that is because I think I heard, what I heard you say is, is you wanted the flexibility. I think the ag zoning still leaves you the flexibility of building the starter homes, which I understand is the market for. It also gives you the flexibility of building bigger homes if the market is there. I know it may spread the time out. I'm just kinda curious as to what that does. We may be back here in the same situation the next meeting, looking at the same ordinance, but I think for us to do, I think it just, I think it deserves that type of study to look at. Let's just take a look at it. If it works out great, if it doesn't, we'll be right back in the same position here in two weeks. So I will second that, and I'll go ahead and call this to order. So there's a motion and a second on the floor to table. What's this ordinance number? So there's a motion and a second on the floor to table ordinance number 15, that's 2024, with the, with the request that the developer work with, the planning and zoning director, to find out how this affects the density remaining in ag compared to changing it to R2. Clear enough? Clear enough?
What's the purpose of having this number?
I'm looking at what that does to his plans, I'm looking at, does that affect his ability to bring sewers to the area? That's what I'm looking at. The overall impact that it has on this development, that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay. So, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Well, I wanted to make a comment.
I'm sorry.
I don't see the purpose of delaying this any longer. I think, what's the difference whether, does it make any difference to constituents out there whether this is five hundred and fifty homes or four hundred and fifty homes? Is that going to make any difference? So, I just, I'll have to say nay.
So, motion carries two, one, to table ordinance number fifteen, that's two thousand twenty-four, and hopefully we can rehear this in a couple of weeks. Is that fair enough? Okay, fair enough, Eric? Okay, great. I just want to add some caveat to this. I know there's been some conversation about maintenance and things like that. I do want to discuss real quick, in two minutes, what the county's done in this area. The county has partnered with the Rural Metro Water Corporation to the tune of one million dollars to ordinate, ordinate, a water main replacement in that area from Speed to Henryville. We've also partnered with the Henryville Membership Sanitation Corporation for a septic receiving facility, the Memphis Interceptor and Lift Station, and the Kenya Road Sewer Extension to the tune of one million dollars. We just recently paid from Champion's Point to sixty-five to the tune of about a half a million dollars, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, I think is what it was. We just repaved line and kind of worked the intersection between Loves and Thorntons to a tune of about two hundred thousand dollars. There's been multiple conversations with an unnamed truck stop to look at how they handle their entrance and exits into their truck stop, but them being a private entity, we have no control of how their traffic moves in and out of that entity. We've had consultants go out there and have those conversations to no avail. So, I don't want to think it's falling on deaf ears that we've done nothing. We have reached out. It's a private entity, no different than me telling you need to mow your grass to a two-inch height, you can mow it however you want. And the county engineer has worked with and is looking at developing plans to improve the intersections along Memphis Boulevard Roads, At Biggs, and McClellan, and eventually looking at chrono on how we can make improvements there. So, this area has had attention, it's, it's, it's got our attention, we've looked at it, and may not be moving at the rate that, that you'd like to see, but, you know, just a quick math, we've invested about three hundred, what, three million dollars in this area in the last two years. So, just wanted to put that on the record. Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the ordinance establishing the GNCHF Emergency Management Grant Fund.
Do you want to take this?
Yes. Hey, if you don't mind, we still got a meeting going on. If you're going to exit the premises, we appreciate it. We've still got business to conduct. Okay. So, Gavin, up before us is ordinance number sixteen, that's two thousand twenty-four, which is an ordinance establishing the search and rescue unmanned aerial system grant fund. So, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you all. Good evening. Gavin Heffner, Department of Public Safety Director for the county. In front of you is an ordinance to establish a fund for a grant we received from the Grand North Park Health Foundation. This is to purchase a unmanned aerial system, also known as a drone, for search and rescue in northern part of the county. This is a partnership with the City of Charleston Police Department. So, this drone will actually be in a police officer's vehicle underneath the emergency drone program.
Okay. Was that, is that not what we used yesterday in the creek bank that I read about yesterday, too?
That was, that was one of our other ones that we had.
Okay, great. Okay. So, this is just the establishing grant fund ninety-one fifty-eight before you today. It's ordinance number sixteen, dash, two thousand twenty-four.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number sixteen, dash, two thousand twenty-four, which is an order establishing the search and rescue unmanned aerial system grant fund with the fund number of ninety-one fifty-eight.
Okay. So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve ordinance number sixteen, dash, two thousand twenty-four, which is an ordinance establishing the search and rescue unmanned aerial system grant fund with the grant number, fund number of ninety-one fifty-eight. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three, zero.
Thank you.
Next up is the EMS service agreement. I know before us today is an EMS service agreement that is a ninety-day agreement with Heartland as a provider. Any, any comments on that, Gavin?
Absolutely. So, in front of you is an agreement to contract with Heartland Ambulance Service for ninety days to provide for paramedic ambulances to be placed throughout the county. This is in coordination and cooperation with Tri-Township Fire and Rescue, ambulance, New Chapel EMS, and these vehicles, ambulances will be dispatched closest units. This also allows the county to gather data over the next ninety days to really put a picture of what we need moving forward for a long-term plan for EMS. So, this is a stopgap agreement at the moment, and so we're going to work with the, all the partners at the table right now, and we're going to coordinate emergency medical response in the county.
Okay. Awesome.
I know we also had Dr. Hazel from our health department and Doug Bennenfield with our health department director. I didn't know if they wanted to make any comment.
Nothing else to add, I just second what he said and available for any questions or comments.
Okay.
I make a motion then to approve the emergency and non-emergency ambulance transport services agreement between the Board of Commissioners of Clark County, Indiana, and Heartland Ambulance Service LLC.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the emergency and non-emergency ambulance transportation services agreement between Heartland Ambulance Services LLC and the Clark County Board of Commissioners for a ninety-day period of time. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three, zero. Thank you both for your work on that, we appreciate it. Thank you all. Next up is our Orion Networks Managed Collaboration Services Contract.
Yeah, so this is an updated contract for a one-year period with Orion. It's been our phone service provider, managing the phone network. In the current agreement, as far as the number of devices and so forth, it's been, it's not been updated for nine years from Orion. We haven't charged us anything. We haven't brought all the addition of the phones, so I think the original agreement was for three hundred and thirty-five devices, and with all the new additions of the courts and the doodlings, there's now four hundred and twenty devices. So, this is an updated one-year agreement. So, the, the cost is eight dollars per telephone, thirty dollars per switch, router, and server. So, it's a total of three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars per month. That encompasses all the additional equipment that's been added since the original agreement. So, it's a one-year agreement. I will point out that the one-year agreement, it's typed up, says it's dated July first, so it shouldn't be August first, it would be the effective date at July first, so that will have to be changed, so you may want to reflect that in your motion, that the one-year term would be August first of two thousand twenty-four through July thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. I think the agreement had reflected that it would start on July first and then go through June third, so we're just maybe effective as today's date because we didn't get it before us last month.
Okay. All right.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Make a motion to approve the Orion Networks Managed Collaboration Services Contract in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars per month, beginning August first of two thousand twenty-four through July thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five.
And I'll say.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the contract with Orion Networks Management Collaboration Services Contract for a one-year period of time in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars per month? Was it thirty-eight, eighty?
It's going to stagger. The first three months, he said that he'd stagger it. Currently, it's at thirty-two hundred a month, but they're going to stagger it where the end price will, this will be the thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, eighty, okay. For a one-year period of time, starting on eight, one, twenty-four, running through seven, thirty-one, twenty-five. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three, zero. Next up is the Tower Pinkster AML Pay Application for the Judicial Center.
Yeah, so this is the final payment request for the construction, or excuse me, the renovation of the Judicial Center, which was both the, the new courts on the first floor and the total renovation of the fourth floor for probation. So, the good news on this contract, the original contract sum, the original sum was one million six hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars, and the change, there were change orders that actually reduced the amount. So, the, the total contract payment and, total payments would be one million five hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. So, the total amount we paid is actually less than the original contract price. So, the change orders, usually you'll see that change orders actually reduce the price and they were on time, so, I mean, everyone was very pleased with AML coming in under the original contract price.
Not only pleased with AML, but the work that Amanda did.
Oh, and Tower Pinkster, yeah. It was amazing. Yeah, and Tower Pinkster, obviously, it was, you know, there's their contract price, there was no increase in anything regarding the work that they had done on that project, so.
I'll make the motion that we make the final payment to AML in the amount of seventy-eight thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-three cents.
I'll second.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the final payment to, a check payable to AML in the amount of seventy-eight thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three, zero. Next up is the contract with Peterson Consulting Services.
Yeah, so this is a request from the auditor's office to retain Peterson Consulting Services regarding the capital asset property record. As you know, a few years ago, the Clark County was one of the first counties that was required to do the GAAP accounting. Not all governmental entities yet in Indiana are subject to GAAP accounting, so it's really increased what has to be done from an accounting standpoint. So, this would be, and I think Peterson Consulting has served a lot of different governmental entities, I think there's a list there, throughout Indiana that helps out with this particular type of GASV slash GAAP reporting for capital assets. So, the cost would be for, for the work they would do for the capital asset accounting for the calendar year two thousand twenty-three, which is due this year, two thousand twenty-four, six thousand five hundred dollars. So, it'd be for one year, whereas it could be renewed and there could be additional services that are still left. So, I don't know if this is for the auditor, if he can, I don't have anything else to add. I do, I will say that the, the auditor, they will pay for this contract from their auditor's funds, correct?
That's why I was going to say.
Yeah. It's always important. Yeah, so it's going for the auditor's funds, so it's for this, for one year, six thousand five hundred dollars, but of course, it could be renewed for additional years, this is what they will do, but this is one of those requirements under the GASV slash GAAP accounting.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Peterson Consulting Services for the development of a GAAP compliant capital asset property record for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the contract with Peterson Consulting Services for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three, zero. Next up is the EMV paving Salem Noble Road change order.
Yeah, so this would be change order number one before you. The original bid price was six hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars. This change order number one is for additional patching due to continued deterioration conditions since the bid time, so the change order would be for an increase of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for a total contract price of six hundred and ninety-four dollars, six hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and four dollars.
So, I'll make a motion to approve change order number one with EMV paving in the amount of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, making the contract price six hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and four dollars.
I'll second.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve change order number one with EMV paving in the amount of five, that fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars to make the new contract price in the amount of six hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and four dollars. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three, zero. Have we got a let date on that and when they're going to do that final quote? I know we've said maybe.
They have, they were, they were going to do it this week, start the milling and paving, but due to the weather, they haven't, so they're looking to get started just as soon as possible, but that's starting down in four oh three, and milling down and repping back up. They're working the patching work, I'll have to figure when they're ready for scheduling.
So, they're going, are they going to, they're going to start at four oh three, work to sixty-two?
Yes.
And then, then go back to?
I believe they probably will, but I don't have confirmation on that because, because I didn't know for sure we were going to have the patching going, make sure that they kept their schedule going for what they had to do.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
We've also had, I've had some calls and complaints about the length of the light at Salem Noble Road and how with four oh three, and that's because right now, loops have been removed, and so as soon as that pavement split, the new loops will go back in, and then, then the lights will be resynchronized and be more consistent.
Okay. All right. Next up is the generator equipment maintenance agreement for the Judicial Center.
Yeah, so Marion Shepherd, our building operations superintendent, has investigated this. He's, this is, as you know, there's generator equipment down at the Judicial Center down down at this building, and throughout the years, Marion said that he would always, on an ad hoc basis, call for service and maintenance, and that's become more expensive over the years, so he kind of called on an ad hoc basis. So, he spoke with Cummins Sales and Service for a three-year agreement. So, it would be for, for three years, it would be locked into a rate of one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents per year for that three-year equipment, and I think if you see in the proposal, they're, they do a very wide range of servicing and maintenance. So, it locks into a much cheaper price than when Marion would call over the years in his predecessors on an ad hoc basis, various vendors in the county, or excuse me, in the area. So, this locks into a cheaper price for guaranteed maintenance and service over a three-year period, and kind of in operation funds.
I'll make a motion to approve planned equipment maintenance proposal for Clark County Building Authority at the Judicial Center in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents per year for the next three years.
I'll second.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the contract for the Clark County, between the Clark County Building Authority.
That's with Cummins, of course.
With Cummins, in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents for the next three years, which is a total of five thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three, zero. That's all for new business. Old business, we have the professional service contract with American Structure Point for Lance Court.
Yes, if you remember, this was originally presented at the previous meeting, but the scope of the previous contract was not what we originally wanted to do at this point in time, so they've come back with the reduced scope to analyze the Lance Court slide correction. Typically, we're starting out more with geotechnical analysis of situations, so the reduced scope is for a dollar amount of fifty thousand dollars to do an initial geotechnical and an initial preliminary engineering review rather than doing the full scope, kind of grab what we need to do, right, it's fifty thousand, reduced amount.
And this is with, this is with American Structure Point.
I'll make the motion to approve the contract with American Structure Point to do the geotechnical review in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
I'll second.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the contract with American Structure Point for the geotechnical services at Lance Court in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Any more discussion? Only question I have is, did we have a start date on that either? Because I know we're.
They are, they have scheduled their chief technical people to start August the sixteenth, is what they tend to have on schedule, hoping that this would get approved, so I'm assuming they'll be able to do it then.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three, zero. Okay. That's all of our old business. Moving on to reports, department heads, and elected officials. Mr. Auditor, anything tonight?
Nothing for tonight.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing for tonight.
Mr. Dixon?
Nothing else.
Sheriff's Department?
Thank you, President. Well, the Clark County jail population is four hundred and fifty-six inmates, with thirty-four of those being better than me.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight, too, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir, thank you.
Any elected officials? Any other business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0, we are adjourned.